Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's town hall meeting. My name is Pralita Payne and I'm the Chair of the ALA Student Chapter here at San Jose State. I am joined today by Joe James and JP Porcaro who are both running for ALA President-elect. They're here to tell us about themselves and, you know, about their campaigns. So I'm gonna turn it over to JP who's gonna start. Okay, go ahead JP.
Alright, great. Oh, I gotta do a little dialogue. Alright, ooh, I got a little shared desktop thing here. Okay. Hey everyone, I'm JP. I don't have any slides at the moment, which is fine. It's just, oh hey, and there's my slide. Cool. Okay. I'm running for ALA President. I am a librarian in Jersey City, New Jersey. I've worked in academic libraries, that's where I am now. Before then, I was a children's librarian. And I went through the school library program on the East Coast. So, I've got a little bit of all three. Oh, thank you for the picture. I wanna talk to you first about why I'm running. This is sort of my elevator pitch when I talk to anyone, not just about my campaign, but about what's really important right now, the issues that are really important to us for the future. And the first issue is funding. So, OCLC put out this document, right? And the document is about why people vote for libraries when there's something like a ballot initiative or a tax levy, something that, you know, someone can vote on for libraries. And, you know, so what we learned from the document is that when someone votes positively for a library, it's based not on how good their library building is, what great services their library offers, but what we know from the fact is that people vote based on their perceptions of librarians. So if we're going to move forward and continue to be well-funded, we have to, we have to continue to recognize the value of librarians. That sounds like a simple message, but it's one that maybe the ALA has not done a very good job of. So, the ALA is 138 years old, our organization. They've done a really good job of supporting libraries as institutions. They, we've done a great job of supporting things that libraries do. But what we haven't done is necessarily support librarians as a people. And as far as that goes, that's what my big main track record is on. So, I'm gonna type some URLs in the thing here. First of all, have you guys heard of Librarian Wardrobe? If you have not, you can check us out on LibrarianWardrobe.com. So, Librarian Wardrobe, we are, we've got, oh, by the way, this is between us, this is only a couple of us, we've got over 30,000 followers on Tumblr. It's really, it's really an amazing thing. And all we're doing is just cataloging what people are wearing. And people outside of librarianship, I mean, we don't have 30,000 librarians on Tumblr, maybe we do, but, you know, I don't think every librarian ever on Tumblr is following us. That means real people are following us, not librarians, real people. Cause they're interested in what's going on and that's really exciting. And so, did you see the Slate article? I'll tell you the title, it's "What a Librarian Looks Like." It was from Slate.com. It was their largest ever photo essay, larger even than some of their other ones, I think one of their other big ones was on the Occupy Wall Street people, right? And so, it's so exciting to see artwork from Librarian Wardrobe taken to a level where we are Slate.com's largest, you know, photo essay. And that's directly related to what my initiative would be, which is, you know, to support librarians on a large scale like that. So these are things that we've done just between us, right? 30,000 followers on Tumblr. The highest ever Slate.com photo essay ever. Now imagine what we can do inside a large organization like that and how powerful that would be for us because we know from the data that that's what's important to voters. So I have an eight-year-old and a 10-year-old at home and they're growing up without a school librarian. Yes, I do love that picture of Ingrid from there. My eight-year-old and 10-year-old, they've never had a school librarian. So what happens to them when, or I shouldn't say what happens to them, let me start here. What happens to us, the students, the young librarians? What happens to us in 30 years when the people right now who are growing up without a school librarian hit the voting booth? Because we, what we know from the data is that it's especially important at a young age that they build up that positive perception of librarians. So we really need from the top, from the top of the ALA, I'm not talking about the AASL, which is one of ALA's divisions, their school library division. I'm talking from the top of ALA. We need to directly address a crisis in our profession, which is the loss of school librarians. And in school librarians, without them, that affects our entire library ecosystem. To borrow from the language of a former ALA President, the library ecosystem is affected. I, as a, you know, in an academic library, it hurts me when I have students that don't have a school librarian because I have to play catch-up on the skills that I'm teaching. When I was in public libraries, when I was a children's librarian in public libraries, I literally was doing what should've been done in the schools. So our kids are losing out. And then what happens when those kids become adults is really the second part. You know, we really need to think about this now if we all want jobs in the future, which I hope we all do. It's, you know, it's important as much for the kids as it is for us. And then my third, you know, sort of theme on my presidential platform, my third, my third point with my platform, is that the ALA is doing an extremely poor, poor, poor job from the top of supporting people of color, of supporting anyone who is not a part of that white patriarchy, right? Of which I, you know, I'm a member, I'm not, I'm not, you know, denying my own privilege. But what I am saying is that when we compare the data between 1985, the ALA's document on equity, and their 2012 document from the Office of Diversity on, you know, race numbers in librarianship, we have actually done worse now in 2012, when that, when those numbers came out, than we were doing in 1985, based on the way that the American population has changed. We're doing worse. Even though we're doing slightly better than we were in 1985, compared to the rate of change in the, in the population, we're doing worse. And this is a really, really large problem. And I think the reason why it's a large problem is because whenever we've got a president in the ALA or, you know, a committee, we throw diversity into some initiative or, or into some, you know, like this is my little program. And, you know, we have the Spectrum Scholars, but what else do we really have going on? This needs to be more than just one little presidential program. This needs to be more than just a checkbox. Diversity needs to be taken seriously at the top. And the way we'll do that is by standing back, listening to the ethnic caucuses, listening to the GVLT roundtable, listening to the, the division that serves, you know, you know, people with disabilities. We need to stop dictating, we need to have, stop having presidents who dictate, and we need to start having presidents who listen. And I, you know, if there's anything I would like to be, it's the president who stood back, checked my own privilege, and listened to what the people who are not being heard are saying. And as far as that goes, I also run ALA Think Tank. Now, depending on the crowd, that either is a really cool thing or really not a cool thing. But I'll tell you this, it's a Facebook group, if you're not on there, just look us up, ALA Think Tank. We've got over 11,000 members. And the reason we became social media's largest space for librarians is because it was a place to be heard. Even though there's, there's a lot of arguments and there's a lot of heated discussion, it's also the only place that that heated discussion, you know, in many ways is happening and certainly not happening in the ALA like it's happening there. And so, even though, you know, I'm trying to make that a better place, it's not a perfect place, it still is a really shining thing on my record to say, this is something that I built and it's ar, it's literally one-sixth, the size of it is one-sixth of the, of the size of the ALA. And we did that in four years. Imagine what we can do together with me as president. That's all that I would like to say. So I'd invite you to follow, you know, Librarian Wardrobe on Tumblr. I'd invite you to, to join the ALA Think Tank if you'd like to follow me. I don't tweet so much about library stuff, but I do tweet about some library stuff, oh, that's not my, that's not my Twitter handle. That's my Twitter handle. Sorry, I'm getting it confused with my hashtag, which is MakeItHappen. Together, we can make it happen. So, thank you all for voting, for, for listening to me. Hopefully, I can count on your vote. And I'm gonna turn my mic off now. Thanks, everyone.
Alright, thank you JP. Now we will turn it over to Joe James. Go ahead, Joe.
Hi there, am I coming through? Great. Well, hi everybody, wherever you are from, the sun is just setting here in Seattle, out on the West Coast, and wherever you are, I hope you're warm and dry. I wanna thank Pralita and the Student Chapter here at San Jose for providing the opportunity. I know both JP and I appreciate it and looking forward mainly to hearing what's on your minds and the kind of questions you have. Let me tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running and what I wanna do and just plant a couple seeds about what I think is likely to happen in the short run and then the long run in librarianship. I'm a faculty member here at the University of Washington, the Information School here. I'm also Chair of the Master of Library and Information Science Program, so I get to deal with students all the time. It's one of my favorite things to do. And for the last 30 years or so, I've been an educator, a writer, have written a column for American Libraries for the last dozen years or so, published some books, done a lot of speaking around the, around the country and around the world. It's been a great opportunity. And I think as much as anything else, what I, what I'm great at is, I'm a good storyteller. Never done it professionally, not as well as some people do who do it for a living, but I tell a good story. And one of the things I wanna do as president is to tell the story of what we do, what libraries do, what librarians do, what librarianship is all about, in as many venues, in as wider, in wider range of places as I possibly can. You know, I wanna be, I wanna get us on The Daily Show. I wanna get the Caldecott, Newberry, and King Awards back on the Today Show where it belongs. I wanna get on NPR. And that's to be able to tell people how incredibly valuable and worthwhile libraries and librarians and librarianship is. And I'm a little bit tired of having this conversation. Yeah, Pralita, if you could forward that to me? That's me. That's me about two haircuts ago, although I do still have that sweater. And I am in that building, I'm upstairs in my office two, two floors above. Thanks. I'm tired of having this conversation. What do you do? Oh, I teach at the University of Washington. Really? What do you teach? Oh, well, you know, my students, most of my students become librarians. Oh, isn't that nice? Yeah, it's nice. And it's also really important. And it's also really powerful. And it's also really critical to just about every aspect of daily life. And I want people to know that, I want people to understand and appreciate that, and I wanna be able to make that case as many, as many ways as I can. I've taken to thinking about libraries and librarianship as critical infrastructure. In a community, it's not unlike the roads and bridges and sanitation system and parks. And in an academic environment, it's not unlike the IT infrastructure and the communications infrastructure and, you know, it's just such a part of everything we do and where would we be without it? Where would our communities be? Where would our schools be? Where would our colleges and universities be? Where would our industry be without the work that we do? And I wanna tell that story and I wanna tell that in a convincing and powerful way to be able to make the case that what we do is important and deserves support. The other thing I've done over my career is, as an educator and a writer and a thinker is sort of raise- Sorry JP, are you okay?
Sorry. I apologize for that. I didn't realize my-
Okay. I'll go on. Is, I've spent my career, you know, asking hard questions, asking students' hardest questions, asking the rest of the profession hard questions and a variety of, you know, things I've written and so on. And, and, you know, where do we go from here? So, you know, you're the, for the students in the audience, let me, let me tell you a couple of things that I tell my students. The first thing I tell my students is that the only thing I can guarantee you is that the, the world you retire from is gonna be very different from the world you start in. And if you look at, at what's likely to happen over the next, you know, a couple of decades, what's happening now, things are undergoing really profound change in a lot of different ways. Look at social media. For a lot of people, social media is, has completely changed the way that they interact with other people, the way they present themselves to the world, and in a few cases, in some cases, it's changed the way people think about themselves. The introduction of massive data sets to the way people do research, what people call e-science or data science. You know, that's a different way of thinking about research, that's a different mode of inquiry, that's a different way of reporting these kinds of things. And that, people already turning to academic libraries for help in how to manage and curate and add metadata to these data sets. And it also changes the nature of the kind of science and research and scholarship they're gonna produce, which then will change the nature of the journal and the scholarly monograph and other, other resources like that. And then, you know, the publishing world is changing. And with mergers and acquisitions, we have more and more traditional outlets in fewer and fewer hands, and those hands are getting greedier and tighter. And so you have this kind of closing fist around what we have always thought of as the publishing world. Not to mention, most of those works are gonna be forever tied to some publisher through rights management software and licensing agreements and a variety of other mechanisms. And then at the same time, you have open source and open access journals, you have self-publishing, you have, you know, the ability to make podcasts and videos and scholarly blogs and a whole variety of kind of open access, openly available tools. And we get to figure out, your generation is gonna get to figure out how to balance these two, you know, how much resources, how many resources do we put in which of those pots to be able to maintain access to the stuff that we've traditionally wanted, but also to encourage and foster these new methods of communication and these new genres and forms and venues. You know, technology is changing the way young people interact and see the world. A colleague here had a workshop a few weeks ago and pulled together a panel of high school students and, you know, asked them about their use of technology. And they were starting to note, the high school kids are starting to note that their siblings, younger siblings in middle school were using technology in different ways than they were. So the technological generations just seem to be going faster and faster. And all of that is necessarily gonna affect libraries and librarians and how we do things. And that's gonna be your generation's responsibility, is to figure out, how do we do that? And in particular, what the right mix of tradition and innovation are to be able to move us all forward in ways that's kind of recognizably library-ish, but also reflects the emerging environment and is authentic to the emerging environment in those communities. So that's one thing I tell my students. The other thing I tell them is, this is absolutely the best thing you can do with your life. You know, you're all studying to be librarians and to work in the information field, you have made the right choice. This is the best thing you can do. We are one of the handful of professions that has the human record in our care. We have everything that's gone before. I actually envy you because you're gonna be able to do work that my generation and people before never dreamed of. The kind of tools and opportunities and capabilities that you're gonna have are just staggering to think about. And you're gonna be able to be much more authentic, genuine librarians than we ever were because of the kind of tools and resources you're gonna have available. And when you get right down to it, what we really do is we make humanity more human. And you can't ask for a whole lot more than that. And this profession's been very good to me, it means a lot to me, my, you know, it has nourished me in a lot of ways. And mainly why I'm running is I wanna leave this profession better than I found it. So I hope that all was of some interest and I really can't wait to hear what kind of questions you all have and what's on your mind this evening.
Alright, thank you Joe. Thank you JP. So we'll move on to question and answer. And, you know, you guys can just pick up the mic if you have questions, or you can type in the chat. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Debbie Ferris. And JP and Joe, thank you so much for speaking tonight to our students. And we will have an extended audience once the recording is released, everybody. I'm the faculty advisor for the group. And I wondered, I'd love to hear what both of you have to say to our students about how they can get involved now. What would be the great reasons that they should get involved in ALA now at this point as they're just getting started with their degree programs and moving forward, even though their careers are still a few years off in the future?
Okay, hi everyone, I'm gonna do this first one. So, I'm of the same generation as the all students. And I would say that the ALA is something that's gonna influence our future, specifically in the ways that I mentioned, the work that we can do as a group is larger than the work we can do out of, say, you know, the ALA Think Tank, which is just a discussion group or a listserv or anything like that. So, my first reason why you should get involved in ALA is because, you know, it's the only thing that we've got going that's this large, right? It's a ship that's very large for us. And then, as far as those of us who need jobs for the next 30 years, for those of us who need jobs for the next 40 years, part of what we're doing when we get involved now is we're making the connections now that we need to make. And we're making the friends that we need to make. And we're building relationships that are going to last us, you know, far into the future. You know, the job market is bad right now. I have a platform on my website, which is just JPPorcaro.com, I'll throw that up. And, and, you know, I told you my three points in my platform, but I also have some real professional concerns that I've listed as well. And one of my professional concerns is, is the job market at the moment. And being involved in the ALA is a great way for you to demonstrate a lot of value in a very tight, very cutthroat job market, which is a really unfortunate reality that we're in right now. So think of it both as, as good for the profession and good for you. I never would be able to be the first millennial to run for ALA President if it wasn't for the fact that I was involved in the ALA. And whether or not I win, what's important is that I've opened up that door for all of us to walk in. So let's please take, take what I've done and please get involved, you know, cause this hasn't been the greatest experience of my life. But it's been, it's been really important for me to get these, these things out. And now it's our time to, all of us together, get involved and, you know, change things for the better and hopefully maybe, you know, throw a couple of things in your resume as well. Okay, this time I'm gonna turn my mic off.
Sure, you say that now. I'd go along with most of that. I was a student member way back in the day. And remember my first conference, I was so excited and went to a couple of committee meetings and nearly got put on a committee and went to sessions and collected all the publisher catalogs and the exhibits and all that sort of business. The ALA is our, our creature. It is our professional association. And, you know, student members are able to join at the reduced rate, which is a great opportunity. Yes, there are tons of networking opportunities, there are people who I've been seeing at, at ALA conferences off and on for years and years. The NMRT, the New Members Roundtable, is a great opportunity, is a great venue for taking your first steps into the organization. It is big, it is overwhelming, it's complicated, it's confusing, it's all those kinds of things. It's also just extraordinarily rich and diverse and fun and, and, you know, you meet somebody new around every corner or on every shuttle bus at the conference, there's always a session going on that's of some interest. And, you know, it's, it's your people, this is your, this is your tribe now, so you might as well dive in with both feet. I'd say a couple of other things. First of all, you know, this, this will all be yours. And, and, you know, those of us who've been around for a while are always delighted when we see people stepping up to take, you know, take roles in committees and boards and divisions and roundtables and in the association overall, because we were all young too. We were all, you know, we started out, you know, hey, where's this session? And so each of us had to start somewhere. So, this will all be yours. The other thing I'd say is, is, you know, what ALA, one of the real virtues of ALA, one of the real benefits of the whole thing, is that it's a great opportunity for collective action. And because of its size and scope and sort of heft, you know, we're taken seriously on important policy matters, and particularly on Capitol Hill, particularly in the federal government, but also in lots of state and local areas as well. And the kind of lobbying and policy work that ALA has done around E-rate funding, around intellectual freedom stuff, now more recently about net neutrality and so on, that has been, that has been a real benefit. It isn't always obvious, you know, you see it, but you see it in the emails and in the magazines and such, but, but that, a lot of that stuff comes out of the Washington office, a lot of that policy and kinda, you know, political kinda stuff is very beneficial. And that's one of the real benefits of, of membership, is that the more, the more representative ALA is, the bigger it is, the more we're able to do that kinda work and the more issues that we can work on. And that, that's just a resources kinda thing. So, there's lots of great reasons to get into it and, and everybody finds their own way and everybody finds their own reasons for joining and for staying. So, why don't we take turns and I'll take the first crack at the next one and we'll go on from there. Thanks Debbie.
Thanks to both of you. Thanks very much. There's a question from Lori in the chat, so I think your idea's good, Joe, that you'll take the first, first response on it.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. Good question Lori. I've been, I actually wrote this down, but I didn't say it in my little opening thing. I was, I was a student government geek when I was in grad school, so I was actually graduate student body president at Syracuse University for a year and vice president for a year. So, you know, that was a membership organization of several thousand people with a several hundred thousand dollar budget. And I learned a lot about deliberative bodies and organizations of people who don't all agree with each other and, yeah, one learns a lot when, when you have to deal with a board of trustees that doesn't wanna do anything other than what they're ready to do. So, I spent a lot of time at the MIMIO machine in those days. Also here, I've been the Chair of this degree program here at the university for the last, off and on for the last decade or so. I was Associate Dean here for a while and been involved in faculty leadership stuff for many years. And, you know, you pick up a lot of bits and pieces about organizational culture and structure. I'm also, in addition to other things, believe it or not, the parliamentarian of our faculty senate. So I run a great meeting, so that people get heard and people feel that their ideas have been processed and then, let's get on with the business and move ahead. And that's not a hard thing to do, but it's not an easy thing to do, and I've been a part of doing that here for the last 15 years or so. I hope that helps. I could keep talking.
JP, I think you need to click your mic button. Oh, nope, there are the dreaded red dots next to his audio. He'll probably be back, we hope.
I take it red dots are bad.
Something I learned at the presidential forum is that I'm the only person running for president that's ever been on the ALA council, which was surprising to me. So let me explain to you what the ALA president is. So what the ALA president is, is it's like a spot on the executive board that you have for three years. You've got a, you know, a president-elect year, you have a president year, and then you have a post, you know, past president year. And it's the only spot that's elected by the whole ALA membership. The rest of the spots are elected by the council. So as far as that goes, I've got, you know, I'm the only one with direct ALA governance experience, which is very exciting for me. That's the last thing I would have ever thought about myself that I'd be able to say, running against three very accomplished, really impressive, you know, people that I really like. I like all the people I'm running against. I was like, oh, well, good for me. I, in order for me to get on council, I was my state's chapter counselor, which also is a NJLA, right, our State Library Association. That's also a term on our State Library Association Executive Board. And I spent three years on our State Library Association's Executive Board, which, you know, is very similar governance experience. I started up the Games and Gaming Roundtable in the ALA only a few years ago. And I'm also the convener of the ALA's Graphic Novel Member Interest Group. It's really cool to be involved in so many parts of ALA's governance. And, you know, that also are things that I should have said in my last answer is that there's a lot of opportunity for those of us who are willing to step in and, you know, take it. But, you know, when I want to talk about a large organization, I will stress again that the ALA Think Tank is over one six, is around one-sixth the size of the American Library Association itself. And over the past four years, it was very, very difficult to continue to have growth in that area and continue to be able to, on a daily basis, moderate lots of competing opinions and lots of people from all over the globe. This is the kind of experience that you just can't be prepared for until you're in it, you know? And so I'd probably venture to say that ALA president is similar, that, you know, no matter what governance experience I have, it's probably not going to be, you know, anything I can experience until I'm in it. But, you know, that's kind of my big organization stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. I actually have a question. I'm wondering if you guys have any initiatives or plans that are specifically focused on students? And also the other part of the question is, what can students do to get involved in your campaign?
Like I said, the student membership stuff, you know, I've got my three initiatives that are really important. That would be the diversity stuff, the school libraries that are just key, and then my actual presidential initiative when I win. And then, you know, underneath I have those concerns. If we're talking about students, I don't think, you know, there's not even a few of us in here, but I don't think any, there's any library school student out there that doesn't spend a considerable amount of time on, I need a library job, right? And I'm very happy to say that they, I have their endorsement because, you know, as a younger person, I, the struggle is not one I am looking at. It's one that we as peers are experiencing together. And we have to decide how we're going to move forward with that. So while I don't have anything specific, you know, I have my three points and they're really, really important for libraries. I don't think that there's anyone who really feels this job market more than we do, you know? And so that's, that's what I'd say about, you know, where I'm at with the student stuff. Cool.
Well, I've been working with students my whole life, so that's not, that's familiar territory for me. If you look at my website, you can see that some of, I've got endorsements from, you know, people who've been around even longer than I have, hard to believe, and some of our current students. And I was very touched, I didn't engineer this because I'm not that smart. JP and I are both the petition candidates, so he knows how this goes. You need 25 signatures to be a petition candidate. And my 25th signature was one of our incoming students, someone who had just started our program a few days before. And that was, you know, I think it was completely coincidence, it was completely by accident, but it was a lovely thing. And I thought, well, okay, now things are sort of coming around for a full circle. One of the, one of the interesting aspects, one of the more important aspects of the presidency that people don't immediately think about is that the president is largely in charge of making committee appointments to ALA-wide committees and a couple of other places. And I, I think that's a great opportunity for students to step forward. That call for volunteers goes out every year. And, you know, in a lot of cases, it's the same old faces who are moving from one committee to another. And, you know, you have to have a certain amount of that because you want continuity and so on. But, but I think it would be, you know, student members are members. You get, you pay the dues, you get to vote. I think it'd be great if, you know, a substantial number of students stepped forward and said, we want to, we want to take our place. We want to be on these committees. We want to take our role in, you know, the business of the association and the work of the, work of what we do. I think that'd be a great idea. And, you know, working with those students to get them on those kind of, get them on those kinds of committees and help them to be successful, I think that would be tremendously important.
All right. Thank you. And do you, did you, did you guys want to respond to how can students get involved in your campaign?
Oh, sorry, sure. If people want to, my website is just joejanes.org. There's a way to put in a little support thing there and then I'm going to draw on those folks to help out in terms of get out the vote things and such come the, come the time voting gets started.
Yeah, you can check out my website also. Thanks, Pralita.
Yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions? I'll still address this when he talked, but I wanted to ask JP what he envisions the future looks like for librarians and information professionals.
You know, I, I hate talking about library future. And I'm sorry that that's my answer. What I want to talk about is the data. And the data can be very dire. Going back to what I had initially said, if we don't take seriously the trends now, you know, the trends of having jobs, this is, actually, I didn't mention this, but it's in my, if you check out my website, it's in my platform. If you check out the trend of full-time jobs being eliminated and replaced with part-time positions all over the country, this is a large problem. You know, the trend, the fact that we don't have school librarians at the moment or we're just, you know, they're just being eliminated and we're at crisis levels right now. What really is important to me is to stop those trends and believe that the librarians, all of us together, will figure out the future as we live it together. But realize that we have to live that future together. And in order for us to have a future together, we have to take seriously funding, we have to take seriously employment, we have to take seriously diversity, and we have to take seriously our profession, not just our buildings, not just our collections, not just our services, but us as a people. Librarians are the future of information, of information professionals, I should say. And I have faith that we can all do it, you know, together. We can make it happen together. That's, you know, make it happen is kind of my thing. So, but let's take these trends seriously. Whether I win or lose, they need to be addressed.
Thank you, JP. Okay, does anyone else have questions? Otherwise, if you, Joe and JP, you guys want to do closing up statements, that'd be great.
Happy to. I was just seeing if it looked like anybody was typing, but I don't think so, so...
Okay, I can do it. Is that cool?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. JP is having lag issues again, so let me go. So first of all, thanks again for all of you for coming and thanks to Pralita and the student chapter for providing the opportunity. And for those of you who are listening after the factors of recording, hope this has been helpful. I just want to end with a sense of optimism. Yeah, I mean, it's been a rough go the last few years and there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on. And, you know, if you look at the kinds of trends around technology, around the economy, around the legal and political infrastructure, the social infrastructure and so on, it, you know, huh, what are we going to do? Well, we're going to do what librarians have always done, is figure out ways to serve our clientele and communities the best way we know how. To work together, to think innovatively and creatively and fearlessly, to build new things, to make old things work better, to do away with some old things, and to make the library as an institution and the, and its role in the community and institution to be as central as we possibly can. People ask me all the time about the future of libraries, you know, oh, what's going to happen? Why do we need libraries anymore? Everything's on Google, blah, blah, blah. What do you need a master's degree for to be a librarian? Some of you may have heard that one a few times. Well, it's because it's really important work and it's not easy. If it was easy, anybody could do it. And, and, you know, we're, we're out there on the, on the edge, on the frontier, making it all work, you know, making trains run on time every day and also thinking really hard about the future and what comes next and how to make that even better. So I'm, I always say I'm optimistic. There will always be libraries, there will always be librarians, they'll do exactly the kind of work they have to do to make, you know, to make their communities and people within their communities better every day. And, and as I said, there's nothing better you can do with your life. So, yeah, you know, things go up, things go down, but it's by far the best thing you can possibly do. So thank you all. Thank you all for all the work you're going to do in the future, for all the people, for all your clientele and communities. And also thanks for your support and I hope, I hope some of you wind up voting for me.
Hey, everyone. It's JP again. Thanks for having me. I feel like I've said what needed to be said. So let's just believe in ourselves and know that we can make a better future. Together we make it happen. Please do add me on Facebook, you know, if you want to vote for me or not, that's cool. But let's be friends because I'm someone who's going to be around for a while, no matter what happens. And we really all need to get together, together and change things together. I'm here to listen and, you know, I'm here to learn. Thank you all again for having me. You know, check out my website, follow me on Twitter and Facebook and all that. And let's stay in touch. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, JP, for stopping by and talking to us. Thanks, everyone, for stopping by. Hope you all have a good night. And JP and Joe, we'll see you at the ALA conference this summer. All right. Take care.
Bye.